Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. Today is Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. It's 9:00 a.m. and we're in the central jury room of the Ralph H. Walton Jr. Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. We're very pleased and honored today to have with us Pastor Raul Sandoval of the Iglesias Cristiano Vino de Evers Church here and his son. The pastor here always, he's this, makes the fourth time, I think, that he's given us the invocation. He does it in Spanish and his son does a contemporaneous translation into English. So Pastor and number one son, please give us the invocation.
Okay, let's pray. Om Sora, because he is good and he is almighty.
Porque él es bueno y es todo poderoso.
Señor, te damos gracias.
God, we give you thanks.
Por esta ciudad tan hermosa.
For this beautiful city.
Por esta gente tan hermosa.
For this beautiful people.
That nos liderea.
That lead us.
Y que pone a ti primero.
And that put you first.
Bendice, sigue bendiciendo Granbury.
Bless and keep blessing Granbury.
Bendice a estas personas.
Bless these people.
Sigue llenándolas de tu bendición.
Keep filling these people with your blessing.
Porque ellos son nuestros líderes.
Because these are, these people are your, are our leaders.
Te damos gracias.
We give you thanks.
Porque nunca te olvidas de esta ciudad.
Because you never forget of, of this city.
Y por eso tenemos una hermosa ciudad.
And that's why we always have a beautiful city.
En el nombre de Cristo Jesús.
In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I would please join in the pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, honor the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Okay, today we're very honored to have with us some very, very special presentations. And number one is a proclamation declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month. And let me go ahead and let's sign this, please, for all the church. There's two copies of it here. And who do we have for the child prevention? Why don't all of y'all come on down up here? And Ms. Bondi, are you with this group?
I am, I'm just a picture taker.
You're just a picture taker?
Just a picture.
And gosh, we have royalty with us this morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is Ms. Jean Kate, the very first Bean Queen of Hood County, Texas. Whoa-ho! Okay. While we were signing the proclamation, do you have a copy of it there? Who's going to read it?
Do you want me to read? I will read it.
Okay, well, good.
Proclamation to designate April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas nearly 270,000 children of Texas were reportedly abused or neglected last year, and whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people, and whereas community must take every effort to promote programs that benefit children and their families, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of the partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in safe nurturing environments. Now therefore, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month and urges all citizens to work together to help reduce child abuse and neglect significantly in years to come.
Great, that's wonderful. We're going to have a proclamation that, have we signed it?
You can stand wherever you want. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the second proclamation is a proclamation declaring April Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So who is with that group? Oh, another distinguished group. Please, I guess we got the spokesman again. Do you want to read that proclamation?
He does.
He does. Proclamation to designate April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas sexual assault is a serious crime that touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas the Hood County Commissioners Court recognizes and participates in a public awareness campaign to support National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing sexual assault and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims, and whereas on average there are 463,634 victims aged 12 or older of rape and sexual assault each year in the United States, every 68 seconds an American is sexually assaulted, and every nine minutes that victim is a child. And whereas on average, the Rape Abuse and Insets Network, the National Sexual Assault Hotline has helped more than 27,000 victims per month nationwide in 2023, and whereas Mission Granbury provided services for victims of sexual assault, Mission Granbury's Victim Service Program served 161 sexual assault victims last fiscal year, and whereas preventing sexual assault means changing the social norms that allow and condone violence and require the collective voice and power of individuals, families, institution, and systems, each wholeheartedly committed to transforming our community. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, sexual assault programs, and victim service providers, the Hood County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and urges all residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to sexual assault and recognize the impact it has on our community.
Great, that's great. Would y'all like another photo op? Okay.
Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Everybody always stands in the same place. Change of order.
Good, good. I'm gonna try. Okay, March is also proclamation month, I guess, so that we have one more proclamation. And this is a very important one, I think, and long overdue again. This is a proclamation to designate March 29th, 2024 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. So let's, who's with us here?
I didn't get the memo to wear the shirt. I'm sorry.
I'm going to read this since it's for my to read, but I'll come down here with Margaret. I don't know who this lady here that's not properly dressed. I tell you, these three ladies right here do so much for this community. The Friends of Memorial Lane, I'm telling you, it's just wonderful. But can all of y'all hear my voice back there in the back of here? Whereas our nation's Vietnam War commemoration gives us the opportunity for all Americans to reckon, ask, honor, and thank our Vietnam veterans and their families for their service and sacrifices during the Vietnam War from November 1st, 1955 to May 15th, 1975. And whereas over 9,000 organizations across America that joined with the Department of Defense as a commemorative partner to honor our nation's Vietnam veterans, including all 197 chapters of the Texas Daughters of the American Revolution, National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, and whereas this commemoration includes 9 million Americans, with approximately 7.2 million of them living today, and makes no distinction who served in country, in theater, or were stationed elsewhere during those 20 years, all answered the call to duty, and whereas in 2016, Veterans Affairs Secretary Robert A. McDonald designated March 29th, the last day that U.S. troops were on the ground in Vietnam, as the day to honor those that have, quote, "born to battle," end quote, and to extend gratitude and appreciation to them and their families. Now therefore, I, Rob Massonfield, Judge of Hood County, along with all members of the Hood County Commissioners Court, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 2024 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day, and witness thereof on this 12th day of March, 2024, and this proclamation is signed by myself and all members of the Commissioners Court. Is there any Vietnam veterans here? Please stand up if you're here. It includes me here, but that guy right there, Robert Hogan, he actually served in Vietnam, so that's really here. I was a jack officer, did a lot of legal work, doing what I had to do with officers back then, but anyway, so we have, this is wonderful, I'm getting here. Y'all want the whole floor? I'm a proud member of the Friends of Memorial Lane. And if anybody hasn't seen the Friends of Memorial Lane, please go down there and visit. It is very, very, it's one of a kind, and the whole nation is.
We do have a Vietnam March, uh, down at the park. It will be a sharp sound warning at 11 o'clock in the morning. And if you have any friends that have Vietnam yet, so if you've got 20 dollars, please stop that and thank them.
Thank y'all. Thank you. Okay, all right. The next item is to receive an update from the Texas Association of Counties on the Hood County Medical Plan, which will include mid-year review, wellness update, and recommendation for the plan going forward. Is there anybody here? Please, wow. Thought I'd recognize all of y'all. Oh, good.
Good morning. So we're definitely not going to be impressive, as impressive as the last few days, so I apologize in advance, but you won't have to take a picture with us either, so.
You don't want any pictures circulating, all right.
So I'm Jonathan Collender with the Texas Association of Counties. I'm your employee benefits consultant. I have our whole regional team with us today, so we have Tasha, she's hiding. Tasha Brent is our wellness consultant, and then we have Lacey Jones over there, who's our employee benefit specialist. So if you followed our team a little bit, we've been mixed and mashed, we haven't had the full team in the Northeast. We're excited to have that and to be able to bring it out to Hood County and support you in a bigger way when it comes to open enrollments and things like that. The data that we're going to get into, we're not going to read all of it. My contact information is in there. If any of you have any questions or any follow-ups, feel free to reach out, we'll be happy to discuss that further. But I just want to make sure I don't miss the opportunity to talk about Melissa and what a great job she does for you. I don't know that in my capacity in this role that I've met anyone who's a better advocate for the employees of their county, and she does a great job and one of my favorite humans to work with, so make sure.
That is. I second that motion, that is true.
So the data is going to really start on page four. With the plan that you have with the deductible and with the court match, I think we have started to make some changes in a way that we're starting to see the costs go down. So the loss ratio is a number that we like to use to kind of reference how much you're contributing versus how much we pay out in claims. So if the loss ratio was $100, 100%, it would mean for every dollar paid in for premiums, we pay that out in claims. So we target 94%. We would like Hood County to have a 94% loss ratio. That way, we've got that 6% to cover administrative costs, and then 94% of that goes to paying claims. Out in the marketplace, if you were with an insurer directly, their loss ratio is typically around 80 to 85%. So with it being as high as it is, you know, we don't have a lot, there's not a lot of fat at tack, you know, we're making sure that money's going to pay the claims and we're not, you know, we're not really trying to, you know, we're not bonuses or commissions and things like that that you're going to see a lot of times from brokers in that community. But your loss ratio over the last three years is at 113%, but in the last 12 months it's at 104. So it's going down. We've made some changes to the plan, we increased the emergency room co-pay. I think we're starting to see some benefits of that. We'll come back when the renewal is released to talk about options with that, and I'll work with Melissa directly on that. There are some things we can do to the plan. I would predict an increase this year in the rate if we were to keep the plan the same, but we, there's some things that we can do. We can review the HMO plan again, see if it's in a better spot for Hood County, if it's something that would be appropriate for you all. And so that's really the gist of what I'm going to cover today. I'm going to let Tasha speak to some of the wellness initiatives and what the claims data says about the members of Hood County, or Hood County, sorry.
All right, thank you, thank you, Jonathan. I am Tasha Brent, I'm the wellness consultant for the Northeast Territory, and I actually came to TAC in August, so this is my first mid-year review season, so glad to be here. And just as Jonathan said, I won't cover everything on here, I'll just go over it really briefly. And you can, again, my card is in your folder, so if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, but I'll start on page five. Just looking at your top three diagnostic categories, the first column is going to be your previous plan year paid, and the second column is going to be your current plan year till the end of January, which is what I have access to in the data now. So just looking at that, you can see that your top three diagnostic categories prior is MSK, cancer, and circulatory, and then this year we're looking at it being cancer or circulatory as well, and then digestive, or infectious disease and digestive is sneaking up in there. So we're just going to continue to monitor that and look at that and make sure that we are keeping an eye on those chronic categories or diagnostic categories. And moving on to chronic conditions, looking at your top three for the previous plan is asthma, hypertension, and hyperlipedia. And then for current plan year, we're looking at hypertension still, and then coronary artery disease and diabetes numbers are also looking currently. So again, but that current is just the, can you hear me?
Yeah, I just have a question. The column that says plan year AD to current paid, what actual calendar months does that cover?
So that, right there to the side, you can see where it says current from October 1st.
Oh, sorry, thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, ma'am, to January 31st. So your plan starts on 10/1. So on the next page, we'll talk about the top RX spend. We're looking at your top one being anti-diabetics, and I just do want to point out that the top driver for that's going to be your GLP-1s, those Ozempic claims and things like that with anti-diabetics. Also, your insulins are in there as well. We did put into place a PA for GLP-1s so that people that are accessing those do have a diabetes diagnosis, and so that took effect in November, so we will see, I do expect to see those numbers for the GLP-1s come down so that only the ones that are needing it are able to access it because that is such a high prescription. So we'll continue to monitor that, but we are seeing a decrease in that already, as you can even see that the claimants' numbers have already gone down there. And then you have your targeted immunomodulators and the neoplastic therapies. And moving on, we'll just look at annual physicals. We know that annual physicals are important for our members and employees to determine any pre, to catch things early. So for preventives, looking at that, you had previously 132 employees get an annual wellness exam. That is less than half of your population, so one thing that we'll talk about on the wellness side is just to try to see how we can increase that number so that we can catch things before they become high costs or high claims. And we can talk about those, should I cover this page? I feel like I'm talking a lot. Okay. On, onto that, we do offer with our wellness a huge suite of programs through Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I've been aware that there hasn't really been a wellness consultant in this capacity in this territory in quite a while, so I am very happy to be here at your, to use in all of these ways to help promote these programs that we have that will help reduce the cost of claims. Orostie is one that we have. Unfortunately, I don't think there's an Orostie location close to y'all, but you do have a couple of members that have, have access to that. Orostie is going to be one of our, that can help with those MSK claims to help, you know, musculoskeletal claims and just overall pain. We have Wonder Health, nobody accessed that one, that's one of our weight loss programs. OMOT is also a weight loss, or weight management program, and Levango is a great one that I would like to also see more access to. You did have 69 members using that one, that is going to be our chronic conditions plan that help with monitoring diabetes and hypertension. So just moving forward to how we can see those, those plans and those things in place is, we actually launched a new program in November called WebMD1 that took the place of Sonic Boom. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Sonic Boom program, but that was a physical activity program that was incentivized for people to get physically active. We, it was only a physical activity program, so we did away with that program and we brought in WebMD1, which is a whole person platform, and there's several ways to earn rewards in that program. We actually came out in November and we did a WebMD1 launch with the members. WebMD1 came out and we did a complete overview, so it's, it's a great platform and I would love to see. I'm missing a H.
Oh.
It's okay. I would, I would love to see that come in to play, that's something that we can look forward to in, in the future. Some things that we can do on the wellness side. One thing that I can talk to Melissa about and see if it's something that would work for Hood County is implementing a CSI, which is a county-specific incentive. What that is, is it's where we would ask that employees receive a physical exam, and in lieu of doing that, then they would receive some sort of incentive. Some counties that implement CSIs, they may offer like a paid time off day or like a PTO day, they may incentivize it with other things, so there's lots of different options and it's very customizable to each county, so that would just incentivize your members to get those annual wellness exams and have prevention in that way. Also, of course, I'm here now, so I am free to come out and educate the members on all of these awesome benefits that they have included in their, in their insurance and in their benefits program. And in doing that, like I said, WebMD1 is a big one, we did have a little rollout, but I can continue to do that and then also help in, I think, open enrollment. I think Jonathan had mentioned that y'all have not had a wellness consultant present at an open enrollment since his tenure here, so I'm available to be a resource at that time as well, just to educate and let members know the resources that they have because y'all have such a great benefits package. We want to make sure that everyone is receiving those benefits and they know the resources that they have available to them because we want to see everyone get healthier. I think that's all.
Okay, and so I'll just wrap up with our timeline of what's going to happen next or what happens kind of throughout the rest of the year. So in May, our board is going to meet and they're going to determine what our pool needed amount is, and that's going to help us determine what the renewal rates are going to be. And so that'll come out in May, the package will be sent out to you towards the end of May, and then we'll work back and forth to make sure that, you know, we have something that's going to work well for Hood County, and then we'll have that turned back in, in June. And of course, we've got our risk management conference coming up too, so if you're interested, if any of you are attending, we're doing a presentation about renewals and how our team puts that together, probably make sure to share that with all of you as well. But thank you for having us come out, we're happy to answer any questions that you have, if you guys have any.
Well, you do a great job, and like you said, we have a great person with our human resources there that works well with y'all, and thank y'all for all the good help that y'all do. So between or among all of you, you're doing excellent job, so thank you very much, okay?
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, there are no service awards, are there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, now we come to the citizens at large comments. We have three people that have signed up to make for the open mic. Let me remind everybody again to, if you want to speak on any of the agenda items, you must fill out a public participation form handed to Sheriff Deeds. And remember, one topic per sheet. Don't come up here and want to speak on three topics and have just one sheet filled out because I'm trying to keep you in line here as to what you're doing, so please do that. So our first speaker is Doug Gillum.
Morning Commissioners, Judges. We are blessed today to have one of our young ladies here by the name of Jean Kate. We're all blessed to have her, like to wish her an early birthday wish, young lady's turning 94 years old. And she was out on the square yesterday doing work for Granbury and trying to round up gift certificates and stuff, so wow, what an Energizer bunny. Commissioners, I just wanted to speak briefly because I'm, I have to be in court at 10:00 and wanted to let you know of the issues we're having with our monthly reports. They're not being able to be submitted because of Tyler issues. And over the past couple of weeks, we're having payment issues either through the Tyler portal, which is municipal online pay. We've had a couple of people submit payments, and Tyler has held those payments. And at the end of February, that creates a problem because those payments get accredited to cases in February, but we don't actually, can receive the money until, till to a, to cases in February, but we don't actually can receive the money until, till March. So we had an issue that came up March 27th on a couple of payments that Tyler took payment but didn't release the payments to the county. And the people that made the payments received receipts on those payments, but yet the county didn't receive its money. And so we have a payment and distribution problem which kind of has a domino effect over into our, our end-of-month reports. And so our end-of-month reports are not being submitted, and JP4 is not the only office. There's a multiple county offices that haven't been able to submit their monthly reports. Auditings sent out an email, I believe it was March 1st, or maybe it was February 28th, that do not attempt to do the reports, basically because the payments and distributions don't add up. And, and so the, the issues we're having is, you know, the money should be paid in the February report, but it's not getting done until the March, if we've done that. And we're also continually receiving OCA. That's Office of Court Administration, which JP Courts report to, as well as other, as other offices. And we get what's called OCA errors. And this is something that should have been fixed by now, but, and that's not an easy fix on our part. When we get an OCA, OCA error on a, on a report for a case, when we're closing the case out, errors pop up, and those errors have yet to be resolved. And, and so, again, it creates a domino effect of having to go in and fix this issue. And many times with our, with our problems that we have with Tyler, we have to submit reports. And kudos to Ashley Weatherford. She does a tremendous job, but a lot of these issues are above Ashley's capability. In Hood Counties, they, they belong to Tyler. And so we're receiving multiple emails from Tyler, and they keep saying they're escalating these tickets. And, and when we have an issue, we've been told, well, we're going to bring our A-team to resolve this issue because for four and a half, almost five months, when we went live, my office was unable to submit OCA reports. That's our monthly report to OCA down in Austin. And finally, we got Tyler to say, well, we're going to bring in our A-team. Well, they should have had their A-team on it way before that. So just the OCA errors, the, the payment errors, a lot of these involve warrants. And we do recall the warrants as soon as a payment is made, but, but the county's not getting their money on time, so that's, that's creating an issue. So there, there are several things that are, that are not a quick fix. We're working on them, but we just wanted, I wanted to apprise y'all of that, of this. Commissioner Samuelson asked me to speak at the end. I think she's going to discuss this or something about Tyler, but the whole county is having issues. It's not just my office. And, and I was speaking with Kristin Hicks earlier this morning, and she deemed it appropriately, there's a disconnect between Tyler and the county in getting fixes to their issues that are causing us to have problems. So hopefully, I can make it back here towards the end, but I just wanted to give you a little information on some of the issues that we're having. My door is always open. I have all these issues, all the tickets that we're having to submit and all the problems. I keep a running track of them and everything that's listed. We had a problem this morning, actually, from a payment that a defendant tried to make on February 27th. We could not enter the payment over the past week. We did get it entered yesterday. We got a receipt from Tyler that the payment was paid, but it didn't apply to the case. So there's a lot of little bugs that, that need to be worked out, and they should have been worked out by now. So we've yet to receive a product from Tyler that has worked correctly, as it should. So.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Second speaker is Greg Harold.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. I want to acknowledge and congratulate you, Commissioner Andrews, you, Commissioner Wilson, Sheriff Deeds in the back, for your victories in the just-concluded Republican primary race. Having stood for election to an office myself through that cycle, I have a really new and great appreciation for each and every one of you that have gone through that process. It's amazing. And it's tough. And it takes a toll. And each of you are to be congratulated for what you do. Thank you so much. Having said that, I want to, I want to say that I'm very encouraged for what, by what we saw through this last election process. A lot of citizens stepped forward to participate in the process. They threw their names forward for election to anything from what I ran for, the Hood County GLP Chair, to the precinct chairs. So we're seeing a lot of participation on the part of the citizens. It's almost a grassroots movement, and I think all of us as Hood County citizens can be encouraged by what we saw through the process. I think this is really the way that we, that we move forward to kind of change the direction of our nation. Having said that, I want to just address the court and thank you for the forum that you provide each meeting that we're, that I'm speaking in right now. I think that you, as a Commissioners Court, are unique in terms of being able to provide the level of public participation that we have here. And not only that, you're to be congratulated by the fact that your agendas are so transparent, it's easy for the public to come here and to speak on issues that concern them. And I, and I want to thank you for that. I also think that the county itself has benefited by this type of forum. I've, I've been in these meetings several, on several occasions where I am amazed by the level of wisdom of the people and the expertise of the people that stand in this podium and speak to each of you and provide insight and help you make better decisions on behalf of the county. So I really applaud you for providing this forum. I'd like to see this level of dialogue and, and transparency carried over into the other elected governing bodies of this county, the Granberry ISD. I think they should emulate this. The City Council should emulate this as well. Now, having said that, one of the things that I would like to do if I'm able to prevail in my race as Hood County GLP Chair in my runoff race, and now I'm going to address each of you as senior elected Republicans here in the county. I'd like to see this type of a forum implemented in the, in the Executive Committee of the Republican Party meetings each month or whenever we schedule those, so that we can have Republicans, all Republicans, come to those meetings and have their voices heard. You guys are setting the standard. I appreciate it. Let's try to carry that over into other areas as well, and let's get the county, and particularly the Republicans in this county, moving forward together. God bless each and every one of you, and thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker is Dr. Harold Granik.
I should, didn't want y'all to forget this voice in the wilderness, but I'll spare everybody five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That concludes the open forum remarks. And one more time, we only have one person that signed up to speak on any agenda item. So you must have a public participation form filled out, hand to the sheriff, and hand to the county clerk for, if you want to speak on any item. So item number one under miscellaneous business to be discussed and consented for approval is, discuss and take appropriate action to allow Mission Granberry and CASA of Hood, Somerville County to place CASA blue flags and blue and teal lights around the courthouse during the month of April in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Additionally, allow the Palux River Child's Children's Advocacy Center to place blue ribbons around the square for the same period. So that's Mission Granberry. You want to speak on this, please? How many years does this make that we've allowed this?
I believe so. Four or five, sir.
Four or five, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So just to raise awareness for child abuse awareness, we are requesting to put the blue CASA flags. Additionally, the Palux River has big blue ribbons made out of metal that they put on the corners of the square as well. And so we were looking to do that again. We will coordinate with the courthouse to make sure that the existing flags get put where they do every year. So we are looking to do that on the first of April, and we would take them down the last day of April.
Okay. Would you like to say anything?
Ditto. No, I'm just kidding.
Okay. Would you like to say anything?
No, we, the same. We would, we're the ones who put up the ribbons on the squares, on the corner, the big metal ones, and so we're requesting to do the same the first week of April and take them down the last week of April as well.
Y'all going to be responsible for putting them up and taking them down, right? There you go. All right. Does anybody else have anything to say in this regard? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to approve to allow Mission Granberry and CASA of Hood in Somerville County to place CASA blue flags and blue teal lights around the courthouse during the month of April in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Additionally, to allow Palux River Children's Advocacy Center to place blue ribbons around the square for the same period of time.
Second. Okay. We've got a tie for second. I guess everybody seconds that, which is a good sign for y'all. So a motion has been made by Commissioner Samuelson to allow Mission Granberry and CASA of Hood, Somerville County, to place the CASA blue flags and teal lights around the courthouse during the month of April in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. And additionally, to allow Palux River Children's Advocacy Center to place blue ribbons around the square for the same period of time. Second, by both Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Andrews. So, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, so keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all. Item number two, discuss and take appropriate action to allow Mission Granberry to display six-foot ribbons and a clothesline project from April 1st, 2024 until April 30th, 2024 in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. This is Mission Granberry again. Same folks. Come on out. All right. Let us hear from you this time. You got to both say something.
All right. I got this. So we have done the clothesline project on the square. This will be our third year. Last year, the shop class from the Granberry High School designed and built the clothesline for us to make it more presentable. So we're asking to display that again this year along with the six-foot teal ribbon for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Okay. You got to say something. Do you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
What is your name?
My name is Nadine Shealy, and I am a case manager at the ACC.
Okay. And again, y'all will put these up and then take them down at the appropriate time, so am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I saw them last year. Was that the first time last year for the clothesline project?
That was the first time that that one was displayed. We did one the previous year. It just didn't look as nice as this one.
Yeah. Okay. That's good. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow Mission Granberry to display the six-foot ribbons and a clothesline project from April 1st, 2024 until April 30th of 2024 in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to allow Mission Granberry to display a six-foot ribbon and a clothesline project from April 1st, 2024 until April 30th, 2024 in recognition of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Carry on.
Thank you.
We look forward to it. Thank you. Okay. Item number three, receive update from emergency management on status of grant applications, timing of awards, and potential uses of funds. Thank you, ladies, for coming down. Thank y'all all very much. And go back to your royal duties, your highness. Thank you for showing us and gracing us with your presence, queen. Amazing. 94 years old. Okay. Ms. Margaret Campbell.
Hi, guys. Commissioner Samuelson asked me to put this on the agenda. Actually, she asked if she could put it on the agenda, just to get an update as to what our grant writer has been doing and all the progress that we've made since she got hired. I am happy to announce that we have a lot of good updates. We've applied for several grants, and we've looked at even more, just unfortunately, a lot of them we're not eligible for. But so far, we have applied for two grants specifically for the sheriff's office. One is to get body armor, so bulletproof rifle-resistant vests. One is to get bulletproof shields for them. Both of them are in the final stages of review, so we've answered all their questions. They came back with a couple of extra updates. We're good to go. We're just waiting on a final answer from both of those. We've also applied for a SMART grant. It's for transportation. It's an almost $2 million grant that would upgrade various things around the county to improve transportation and improve communications and public awareness. We've applied for Senate Bill 22 for both the sheriff's office and the prosecutor's office. We have also received information that we are in the final stages of that. We are just awaiting a deposit into the bank accounts for that, as well as a $1 million generator grant. We're trying to get generators for all the fire departments and all of the EMS facilities, including the three new ones that are about to be built.
On the first one that you mentioned, the grants for the sheriff's office for the bulletproof vests and the shields, what was the total on that?
The total on that was, the shields was just over $100,000. The vests were $67,000.
And the timing of when you expect?
We are in final review, so we're not exactly sure. Both of, on both of them, they have come back for questions. They've asked for additional information. We've submitted it, and on the 4th, I believe, of March, Emily got a notification that it is on the governor's desk or in his office for approval. So we'll see.
And that, what was that? You said the SMART grant for $2 million. What was that for?
It's a transportation grant. So what that is, is we are asking for weather sensors, the automatic gates for low-water crossings, cameras, all sorts of things that would improve transportation and keep, make it easier for us to kind of, to gauge what's going on in the community, especially in areas that sometimes it takes a long time to get emergency vehicles out there.
And the timing? Do you have any idea?
They told us that we would hear back in March. I was hoping that we already would have heard back by now, but it's the government, so we haven't.
And the generators, you think? What's the timing on that?
There's not a timeline for when they will alert us as to yes or no. However, we've been talking with them. Once again, they asked for additional information. We provided them new information, and it is back turned over to them. It's in their hands.
Do you have any questions or discussion?
Really good, good news.
Yeah. We're excited.
Especially as we're about to go into budget season, so this is good information to have at this point. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, Margaret Campbell.
Thanks.
Okay. Then, thank you. This brings us to item number four. Discuss and consider for approval the placement of the Alamoan letter granite structure, well, it's not granite, but it's a structure, on the south side of the historic courthouse grounds. Let me go ahead, and I'm going to start a little bit, and I say two of my friends out here. Well, let me just go ahead and welcome up Ron Sutton and Robert Holman to come up here to the stand, please. I'm going to start it off by, everybody in this room that's a native Texan knows what's I'm gonna start it off by, everybody in this room that's a native Texan knows what the Alamo Letter is, the Victory or Death Letter. And that is that the Alamo, and our Senator Burdwell, has purchased a bronze copy of that letter and has donated it to Hood County. The cost is $4,000. He paid it out of his own pocket. The plan is to have 254 of those bronze plaques placed at all county seats in all 254 counties. And what Senator Burdwell has done is that he has made me or appointed me to be the chairman for the committee to do the placement work for this. And like all good chairman, I get real good help to help me with this. And these, the real good help is in the form of Ron Sutton and Robert Holman here, who happens to be members of the Sons of the Republic of Texas. And I wanna let Mr. Sutton start off with and explain what have, what we have done so far.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, commissioners, Judge. I don't know if y'all have seen a replica or a photograph of the replica of the letter. The bronze is actually two feet wide and three feet long. Judge Massengill, Senator Burdwell, myself, and a couple other folks from Hood County went over to check out the bronze being dedicated in Ellis County at Waukesha Hachy. And that was about two or three weeks ago. Each bronze will be identical. And this was a brainchild of a guy by the name of Bill McNutt and his daughter Sloan. And Judge, I think they're from over east of here somewhere. I'm not really quite sure where Bill lives, but their dream, their vision, is to have these Alamo Victory or Death Letters written by James, Colonel James Travis, placed in every county seat, 254. They've got the full backing of the Texas Senate, and that's why our excellent state Senator Brian Burdwell jumped on board. And I believe Brian has purchased three of them. He may not want that to be out, so just forget I said that.
Well, don't worry about it. We just have the newspaper here. Yeah, it won't get out.
It's being recorded.
But what we have planned so far is to have a grand dedication ceremony. We certainly hope all of the commissioners are there to help dedicate this bronze. We have other things planned, like band and chorus and some dignitaries making comments of dedication. We're in the process of getting quotes to have the concrete foundation and base poured. So we should have that shortly, Judge.
Yeah.
And I think that's about where we are right now.
Right.
The, the location, we've decided on the south side, I believe.
Right. And Mr. Holman, you were with us with Senator Burdwell after we got approval from the State Historical Society. We all remember that, don't we? So the first thing I did was to send it off to the state, gave them all the applications, took photographs of where we wanted to place it, told them what we were gonna do. They've sent a letter back saying, please proceed. But then we got the local permission from the local historical society. They've given our permission. Senator Burdwell has looked at it and said it's fine with him. So I think that, that other than getting approval from the commissioners' court here, I think that's where we're gonna do it. It's gonna be placed on the right side of the stairwell leading up into the courthouse, the south side of the courthouse. And let me see that right quick. It's right here. Y'all recognize this? The front entrance, like looking across from 1890, Paradise Cafe. And it will be placed right there on the ground permanently. And like Mr. Sutton said, we're taking bids right now to get the concrete construction, which is exactly what the, what was used in Ellis County to display their Alamo Letter. And the reason for that, some of the counties are gonna be able to put their letter inside their courthouse because they have seven-day-a-week, 24-hour-a-day security. But we don't. But there's so many people that come to Granbury, they'll be able to see this letter every time they come and visit the courthouse. It's really non-obtrusive. And the reading the letter almost brings tears to your eyes, no matter how many times you read it. But yes, go ahead, Mr. Sutton.
And, and Judge, the, the placement and the way that the foundation would be built, the letter will be placed at like a 38-degree angle, so it's readable from a distance. And it's really a beautiful piece of art. The foundry that's doing it is located in Corpus Christi, and they've been in business, his family has had this foundry business for over 100 years. So the whole project is steeped in history.
Right, and I think it is. Mr. Holman, do you have anything to add?
No.
This spoken like a true soldier of the Vietnam era, wasn't it? He just goes ahead and does his job on the thing.
Pardon? Uh huh. Fay asked the, the dimensions of the bronze, and it's two feet wide, three feet long, and it weighs 202 pounds. It's, it's very impressive.
Very impressive. It really is. Okay. So with that, I'd like to make the motion that the commissioners' court give approval for the placement of the Alamo Letter Structure on the south side of the historic courthouse be done as, do it well in advance of the date for the dedication, which is gonna be Saturday, April the 20th, at 11:00 a.m. That's on a Saturday, and it's at 11 o'clock. So we figure that will not interfere with anybody that was up too late. They should be up by that time drinking coffee and not be interfering with the lunch crowd. And of course, we want the Friends of Memorial Lane to be there. That we're gonna try to have a very, very dignified ceremony. We have so many good, great invocations here, but the state chaplain that gave the invocation to Ellis County was so impressive. I asked him to come do the invocation, and he said he would. So we're gonna do that. But we're gonna have a very impressive deal. And we're gonna have somebody singing, "Texas, our Texas." Have you memorized "Texas, our Texas" yet, Ms. Sutton?
Don't ask me to sing it, but I'm working on it.
Yeah, they sang the state song. It, it was very, very beautiful. I think, in my opinion, that next to the Texas Constitution, the Victory or Death Letter, or Travis's Alamo Letter, is the most significant document out of the Texas history, especially during the period of 1835 to 1845.
Yes, sir.
So I make that motion that, in accordance with the approval from the State Historical Society, that we'll be allowed to place the structure holding up the Alamo Letter on the south side of the historical courthouse as stated in the approval photograph.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. I think this is all wonderful, and it's gonna be beautiful. Are we approving the placement or the cost of the foundation?
Just the placement.
Okay, so once you have the estimates, that will come back for approval for the county to pay for the structure, or?
Maybe. I'm gonna see what we're taking bids, as Mr. Sutton said, right now. And maybe there would be a private contribution to pay for the structure itself, so even the county will not have to pay for that. So we're not asking the county to pay for anything at this particular time. Just give us approval so that we could get a complete bid on placing it. And then after we find out the final cost, we're hoping that we can generate private funds that will pay for it so that the county will not have to spend any money on this.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I'm glad to report that carried unanimously. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Item number five, we're going to take last, but we do have a speaker here named Edward Sandlin. So I'm gonna let Mr. Sandlin go ahead and make his comment. But we're not gonna discuss that or not gonna go into executive session, but I'm not gonna let, make everybody here, all the heads of department stay. We're gonna take that up and go into executive session last. But please, Mr. Sandlin.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you for allowing me to come, commissioners. On aside, item number four, Sandlin Custom Homes will give the two, the first 250 for the plaque. So put that down.
All right.
So I, I say that because I'm a, I, I consider myself a deep part of this community. I'm a home builder, Sandlin Custom Homes. I'm also president of the Hood County Builders' Association. And, you know, I just have a deep fondness for Hood County and that all that we do, all that we give to the, the public. I'm, I'm here on item number five to convene into executive session to discuss medical center and YMCA building, real estate leases. I, I don't exactly know what the executive session's gonna talk about. I'm not privy to that. But I'm just here as a board member of the Hood County YMCA. I was on the orig, I was the chairman of the original group that put out the propos, helped put out the proposition and then the vote over a dozen years ago, where 60% of the county decided that they did want a recreation facility. And it, it's my belief that they wanted the YMCA to run it. That's up for you guys to decide. We do have an agreement with the county for the YMCA to run that for, I believe, 25 years. And I do know that the commissioners have an ability to possibly amend that. We, I, I'm here to say, I hope that we don't. There was a bond, the, the YMCA opened in April 2012. There was a bond that was paid for by the taxpayers. And that bond has been completed. There's no fees to the taxpayers at this point, or fees to Hood County at this point, as all of the overhead, as I understand it, and I am speaking as a unpaid member of the board, I do not, I'm not from Fort Worth. I'm not part of the YMCA as a paid employee. I'm just here as a board member and a concerned citizen that the YMCA does good work. We raised $120,000 last year outside of the regular operation. Hood County residents put in $120,000. That $120,000 went to help pay for people who cannot afford the facility for their family to come work out, rehabilitate, learn swimming lessons for free. All that went back to our county and our endeavors in and around the county. And again, as, as I'm aware, the county does not pay for any, any portion of the operation of the facility. If I'm wrong, then I'm wrong. But I, I'm not aware of it. The pool alone, and, and one of the reasons that we got the facility is because a lot of our swimmers and swimmers' parents voted for it. Our kids were leaving for Fort Worth at 5:00 in the morning to go to Panthers Boys Club or the Rickle Center at TCU. And we felt like we needed a place to do that. And the school partnered with us, helped us with the land selection process on James Road, and we got the facility built. And I think it's been good for the county. And I hope that the commissioners and Judge Massengill, I hope we decide to keep the YMCA in that position as operator of the recreational center. I'll just say, the, the pool and the boiler and the chemicals alone cost about $80,000 a year, all paid for by the YMCA. We've had, HVAC was replaced at cost by the YMCA, not, not the county. So I just hope you'll consider that in private session, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, that's the only speaker that signed up. And like I said, we're gonna pass now and go then to item number six. Consider and take appropriate action to promote an equipment operator from Roman numeral 2, $54,080, to senior equipment operator, Roman numeral 1-1, at $56,160, effective Monday, March 25th, 2024. Road Ops, Mr. Donald Lenny. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, I assume that everyone got the, the backup for this. I'm just here to tell you that this employee is worth moving him up to this position.
Okay.
Very much an asset to our department.
I'll tell you one thing. I never do question Donald Lenny. When he recommends something, I usually go along with his recommendation. When Tech Dot calls up here when the, the freezing or whatever, and they ask me for something, I say, uh, let me give you the number for Donald Lenny. Do y'all know this guy here? And he said, we certainly do. Yeah, we'd rather talk to Donald Lenny than talk to you anyway, Judge. And I let him do it. So he knows the right equipment, the right guys to do it. So I trust it. So anything else? Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to promote an equipment operator, Roman numeral 2-2 at 54,080, to a senior equipment operator 1-1, at 56,160, effective Monday, March 25th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to promote an equipment operator from Roman numeral 2, from $54,080, to senior equipment operator 1-1, to $56,160, effective Monday, March 25th, 2024. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Lenny.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Number seven, discuss and consider for approval the placement of a memorial plaque for Tona Newman to be displayed at the Ralph A. Walton Junior Justice Center. As all of y'all know, Tona Newman passed away recently. And she was the longest-serving district clerk in history of Hood County for over 30 years. And her family came to me with the idea of just putting a bronze plaque out here in the hallway near the district clerk's office to kind of memorialize her service of over 30 years to Hood County. And I told them that I would be proud to sponsor that and for them to give the commissioners' court some options as to what they would like to say on that plaque. And all the commissioners, do y'all have all the options?
Yes.
Let, let me go ahead and read what the options are in full disclosure and transparency here of what to place. So option one would be Tona Lynn Newman, the longest-serving female political candidate in Hood County. Served as district clerk for over 30 years from 1991 through 2024. Her historic career and commitment to the Republican Party blazed a trail for future female and Republican candidates alike. That's number one. Number two, Tona Lynn Newman served as district clerk of Hood County for over 30 years from 1991 to 2024. Her historic election in 1991 made Tona Hood County's first Republican to win a Democratic, to win over a Democratic opponent and launch a career in which she became the longest-serving elected female in the county. Tona's commitment to her colleagues and constituents blazed a trail for future female and Republican candidates alike. Option three, in honor and recognition of the first and longest-serving female in Hood County, Tona Lynn Newman and her outstanding service to Hood County as district clerk for over 30 years. Those are three options that were given to this court by Tona's family. And that's what we're here to decide right now. I guess A is to decide whether we should vote on placing a bronze plaque. And I guess we, I didn't discuss this with anybody, but I see her widder, husband, widder or husband, Mr. Newman is out there on the deal. Were y'all gonna pay for the plaque, or would you want the county to pay for the plaque?
The county, yes.
I'm sorry?
The county.
The county, okay. So the county to play for?
Where would it be?
I'm sorry?
Where did, where would they like for it to be placed?
Put it outside in the hallway, right somewhere next to the district clerk's office. in the hallway here.
Yeah.
Right? And we're just talk, we're talking about a plaque depending upon which version we are, just a bronze plaque to be placed out there. So I'm open it for discussion as to what anybody would like to make a motion on what we, what's appropriate to be placed on the bronze plaque.
My personal opinion is, you know, the first option, you know, pretty much says, you know, the whole volume of what she did as, you know, the first Republican to win in the county at that time, which was blue at that time, and also the fact that, you know, 30 years plus in that one position. So that would be my, my vote would be for option one. And place, you know, in the hallway there, you know, by the door going into that office.
Okay. Any discussion or second? Any other?
I actually was leaning towards option three, just because it was very to the point and very, it was just, said it all in just a few words. So I, I really liked option three. And honor, because it starts with honor and recognition, and that's what I think that the plaque is, is to honor and recognize. And that's, that's when I, what stuck through, when I read all three of them, that one really hit me.
Anybody else? Any other Commissioner have any?
Yes, I do. Excuse me. I have to agree with Commissioner Samuelson on that. I don't think we should be putting a party, that we're going down a slippery slope when we do that. And Harold, Dr. Granick's over there nodding his head in total affirmation of that. But I don't think it's the right thing to do on a taxpayer-funded, paid-for edifice to put the party on there. So that's just me.
And, you know, given that, I concur.
Okay. So.
I like that idea too, sir.
The motion then by Commissioner Samuelson is option three, which would read, "In honor and recognition of the first and longest-serving female in Hood County, Tona Lynn Newman and her outstanding service to Hood County as district clerk for over 30 years." Any further discussion?
I'll second that one.
Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and that's what will be put, and we will get that done. Be sure to tell the rest of the family, Mr. Newman. Okay. Okay, that brings us to number eight. Discuss and take appropriate action to renew the interlocal cooperation agreement with E wrath County.
Judge, Commissioners, this has been in place since August 25th of 2020 with E wrath County, and they'd like to raise the price. We're, we're kind of at their mercy. It's hard to find places to do this. They've been good to work with us, and it's not very far away, so I'd need you to approve this interlocal agreement and sign it, and let us keep moving forward.
Did you see the email that I sent late to Kim? Okay. So that, do you have that replacement page?
I, well, I'm just gonna let the, you guys discuss all that.
Okay. Mr. Mills, I mean, there's, when I read over it, there's one, it doesn't make any difference. One of the things is just a typographical error says, "All agreements that are, which are not contained in agreement will be enforceable," which it says will not be enforceable. But that is strictly covered, if you look at the last four deals up there, it says it 10 different ways from Sunday, that any oral modifications would have to be done. You seen that, the last four on the last page?
There's just two typos that the county attorney's office pointed out, and then this signature or this notice page needs to be replaced.
What I'm saying is 5.4 prior agreements. This agreement contains all the agreements and understandings, either oral or written of the parties, with respect to any matter mentioned herein. No prior agreement or understanding pertaining to any matter shall be effective. So that is not, I, like the sheriff says, we are totally at the mercy of E wrath County, period. You look at this document, they can practically have any reason to give the sheriff eight hours' notice for him to come up and pick up his inmates, and he has to do that. Is that your understanding too, Mr. Mills? Did you read that?
Yes. All I did was just, the, the two things that we had suggested, just to clean it up and have a better copy, I went ahead and did that this morning in case you didn't have that done, if you want to do just the cleaner version.
What's the other typographical error?
Okay, so there was the, the word "not," and what page was it on?
That's on, in section 3 dot 2, right before 3 dot 3, and then in section 4 dot 2, the word "bother" should be "both." It's just a typo. I don't think E wrath County would have any issue with just fixing a typo.
That's, that's the exact version that you already have, except for those two cleanups of the 3.4 and the 4.2, or whatever it was.
And then the notice page, is that?
Well, I didn't change the notice page, I didn't.
Okay. We'll see, he's about to turn to that page.
I think on the face, it looked okay, but maybe there's something.
Y'all, gee.
What?
I'm gonna tell you what, maybe, and as a lawyer, to make those two changes that are insignificant, when we are totally at the mercy of E wrath County, is, they've signed it, I'd like for us just to sign it and send it back.
I didn't know they signed, or I didn't see what they'd signed.
It's a signed, I got, we got a signed copy from them, so.
See, this is wrong.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that part.
The contractor should say Hood County, and this.
No, that's right. The contractor's E wrath.
Well, we.
And the county is Hood County.
Okay, there were, I mean, it's gonna be okay. I mean, if you want to just not send a new thing back to them with any cleanups, I mean, we can make it work. This one has some other little typos that I cleaned up on the sheriff's version, but it's, I mean, it's not a big deal. I mean, I was, she asked me, and everybody asked me to do a clean version, so I did, but y'all can do whatever you want, whatever.
Yeah, those, I wouldn't see why E wrath County would have a problem just fixing a typo, a misspelled word, but as long as the note, the main thing was the notice, the notice is fixed, and that was the main thing.
Those two typos would make no difference whatsoever from both to bother, or bother to both, and not have "not" when you have that four, 5.4 in there that says, "This is the total agreement, and this agreement contains all the agreements and understandings, either oral or written of the parties, with respect to any matter containing, no prior agreement or understanding pertaining to any matter shall be effective." This is it. So when you sign it, this is it.
Right, it's just sloppy. It's just sloppy.
The sheriff and the county judge have signed it. To me, given the fact that we need E wrath County a lot more than E wrath County needs us, there are people vying for space in county jails all over the state. That's the big deal. You know, you talk about building a jail or not building a jail or remodeling a jail, the issue's gonna be, is that everybody is running out of space. Judge Bufkin and Judge Haddock have taken care of more cases this past year than any time in the history of Hood County, or over, in excess of 200 cases. Am I right on that? Are you familiar with that?
Well, I don't know the exact number. I, I'm not trying to take a position, I'm just, she wanted a clean copy, you can do whichever one you want.
I know, I'm just saying it. Thank you. I got it.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Let me just finish what I'm saying. More than 200 cases more than what we did, and we've still got a full jail and still sending inmates out. Tarrant County is sending them, inmates as far as, what, Lubbock County? Isn't that what they're doing?
Post County.
Where?
Post.
Post, which is next to Lubbock, right there. I knew it was somewhere out in that area. They signed this thing to have two clerical errors that would make no difference about the legality of this, and do you agree with that, Mr. Mills?
I, I think it's gonna be fine. I mean, if you want to sign the old one, that's fine. It's gonna work, it'll be okay. It doesn't look great, but it's fine. It'll work, you know?
Well, you know, you'd have to run down the sheriff and run down the county judge up there and get both of them to review this, and when I get a document as an attorney, and I get a new instrument, I just don't look at the two errors that the other side says, "This is the only changes I made." No lawyer ever signs anything like that. I sit down and read it again, line by line, word for word again. I mean, I'm just telling you the practicality of this, folks, so.
There's software that can compare. The reason that Tarrant County, Sheriff is correct, that part of the reason that Tarrant County is having to send people out is because they are unable to hire jailers as well as we are. Is that, which?
I'm not 100% sure if that's it, but I think they're just out of room, and that's why they've moved, paid the extra to put them out there and bust them out there, so I haven't sat down and talked to them about it.
Yeah, I read that they had, they're unable to hire jailers. I mean, we're having the same issue. We can't hire, we're having a difficult time hiring, hiring jailers, they are as well.
I got a question on the money. What, what, what is, this agreement says $65 a day, right? What has it been?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, so they raised it $20. And doesn't it cost us $65 a day to keep them here?
Seventy-one.
Cost us $71 a day to keep an inmate here. $71, so this is a $6 savings to send them out. If we could send them all out, it'd be better. So that's just my two cents.
Of course, they can't take 226.
That's true.
No, they can't take.
Yeah, so that'd be good. What's gonna happen, I think, Eric, and you can address this, is that more and more counties are saying, "Come get your inmates, we're running out of space." Didn't Parker County just make that request last month?
Yes.
March 1st or 2nd, yeah, we had to go get the last two we had up there.
Parker County's a lot closer. I mean, I'd like to keep them around here. Johnson County, folks, we're running out of space here. When I have a signed contract here, and like Mr. Mills said, and like I'm telling you, these two typographical errors do not affect the validity of this instrument here. I don't like sending something back to them, particularly since it's cheaper than what we've already, what we're paying for. This is a, this is an excellent agreement for Hood County, isn't it?
Compared to others, I mean, it's not $100 a day like Johnson is, so the last thing that we want to do is just utilize the cost of Johnson County for all of our inmates that we have to house out, so.
What I'm saying.
Obviously, having a contract with E wrath is great, Somerville, that's great. If any changes need to be made, it's just the process of sending it back, just gonna prolong longer. Whatever needs to be done, needs to be done, we just need to do it.
Well, it doesn't make me, I'll do whatever this Commissioners' Court votes it tells me I got to. Me, as being a lawyer and the judge here, it's my signature, I'd prefer to sign the agreement that's been fully executed by E wrath County.
I agree with the judge on that part.
Okay. Do I have a motion? I make a motion that I'll be allowed to sign a fully executed copy without making any kind of clerical error corrections, so that we can send them back a fully executed copy. Second. Seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I'm signing this document right here, and Sheriff, there's a place for you and the county auditor to sign it, then we have us a signed agreement, right there. Okay. You're gonna get. Ms. Matlock, would you sign your John Henry? Okay, while they're doing that, let's go ahead and go to item number nine. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the county judge to sign the purchase agreement with SAP for Crystal Reports. SAP is not on a contract, so three quotes have been obtained. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. This was an item I brought up, I believe it was, either at the end of December, early January. At the time, the quotes kind of didn't really match and stuff, so we had pulled it to kind of better align everything. What I've presented now is essentially, we're back to those three choices again between Crystal Reports, JasperSoft, and Tableau. The one I would like to go with is Crystal Reports, which totals out to be about $27-ish or $28,000. However, it is a one-time payment, whereas JasperSoft is $33,000 annually, and Tableau is about $18,000 annually. So Crystal will be more upfront, but less in the long, in the long run. They do have an annual support fee that is just purely for support, for them helping us. We do not need it, it's not mandatory. So essentially, if, you know, we can pay for Crystal once, be done with it, and it does not have any annual costs unless, we need some kind of support from them.
Well, that's not what the contract says. The contract says that the maintenance base is 22% initial support percentage, and then it increases every year. So what I, what I didn't know, it says it increases based on the CPI index, which currently the CPI for the last 12 months is 3.1%, but we don't know what that will be in the future. I mean, CPI is based on the economy, so who knows what it could be? And so what, what it didn't say is, it increases based on CPI, but what, what I was, didn't understand was, is it, okay, right now it says initial support percentage is 22%, so that's 22% of the $26,000-ish dollars. But when it says it increases 3%, does that mean it's gonna go up to 25% if the CPI is 3%? Or does that mean that it goes up to 22.6? Is it 3% of the 22, or is it 3% of?
My guess would probably be 22.6, unless at some point they plan on charging us upwards of over 100%, but.
Well, it says 3%, so to me, right now it's 22%. Initial support percentage is 22%. So if it increases 3%, that seems to me that it's gonna go to 25%. If CPI, I mean, what if CPI is 10%? Then it's gonna up 10%. So there's no way around, and it does actually say in here that not raising fees is not a waiver of SAP's right to do so, so they can't not charge us maintenance fee. So I would suggest that if we go with this, and you answered one of my questions, which is, this seemed like it was not the cheapest one, but, because I thought $16,000 was a lot cheaper, but $16,000 is every year.
Correct.
For Tableau.
Correct, for a software that does not work either.
So, well, it has its uses. It might not work for what.
It does not work for what it, for what this project is for. Tableau does not work.
Okay, well, I used it at a prior place, and it works for certain.
For this project, Tableau does not work.
Excuse me, thank you. It works for what it was built for, but maybe not for this project, for what you need it. The, the use case that you need this for, Tableau is maybe not the current, the correct.
Correct, that is what I stated.
Yes, so what I would suggest, because we have a budget to manage, that if we're going to go with SAP, that we change this to say that the support will go up no more than 2%, because we don't know what CPI could be. It could go up 10%, we don't know, and we have a budget to manage. So I would suggest that if we're gonna go with SAP, that we redline this contract and, and say that, that the maintenance based on CPI, but no more than 2%. And that's not unusual, that happens in a lot of software contracts, so I would, that would be my. And that's not unusual. That happens in a lot of software contracts, so I would, that would be my suggestion.
Mr. Mills?
And I will preface that it has been a little bit since Matt has looked at it. The verbiage hasn't changed. It was only the numbers that have changed, so his memory may not be 100% fresh on exactly what is there.
Okay, well.
I had reached out to Drew and Owen, I believe, and said, you know, do I need to review anything? Are we good? And at the time that I heard back from them, it was like, hey, we're all right, don't worry about it. And I got emails kinda last evening. So I guess to the question, I mean, if you wanna redline it and say we want it slightly different, then the ball's in their court whether they.
Deliverance do we have against a multimillion dollar company?
Yeah, that's a complete novation. That means that they're, they could completely change this contract. We have no contract. They can rescind their offer. It's called a novation and legal. So we make the change from 3% to 2%, they reject it and say, go fish. Then what are you gonna do?
They can just reject it and we're back to the original contract, which is based on CPI, which we don't know what that'll be. So I guess we can always cancel the software if the, if the maintenance goes up to 10%.
Well, do you need this software in order to do your job?
No, the sheriff does.
Oh, the sheriff does?
This is for reporting out of.
Well, that's even more important, I guess, from my viewpoint.
I'm just trying to protect the budget and the, you know, so that we know what we are, what we're signing up for. Because based on this contract, we don't know what we'll be paying for maintenance in the out years because it's open-ended. It's based on CPI. It could be 10%, 20%, I mean, hopefully not, but.
Have you worked with these people before, always? Yes.
No, I've never worked with SAP.
I have.
For a long time and my father has worked with them, so I've known of their business, known what they've done since the 90s. But they're a company based out of Germany.
Yeah, I've worked with them quite a bit.
Well, I guess we got, you got a choice here. If we redline something and change it from 3 to 2, I don't see what that's gonna do.
We're just.
Frankly, but it's a complete novation and then they're free to either accept it or reject it. And that means, so what do we do in the meantime?
Well, we got, if I could throw in, we, the effective date on this is proposed at 3/31/24. It seems to me like we could move this to the next court, make, make the counter and see, see what they say. And they either say, no, they're not gonna do it, or, or they'll accommodate us. And we're still within the timeframe, so I say we table this and get that question answered before the next, by the time we have the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Can you go ahead and reach out to them and just tell them that, try to see if you can work.
Yeah, I mean, I can absolutely reach out and ask it. I just simply don't see them complying.
We won't know till we ask.
Yeah, no, I'm just stating my opinion.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to table it.
Just, sorry, just taking time, I mean, what if you just voted to approve the redlined version? If they approve it, it's done, you don't have to come back to the next court. And if they say no, then you come back and reevaluate the next court, just save a little time possibly.
Thank you for earning your keep. I withdraw my motion, feel withdraw your second.
I'll withdraw my second.
And then you can make the motion the way you want it, Commissioner.
That will not work.
Why so?
This contract is DocuSign. We cannot sign a redlined version and send it back for them to agree. I would have to reach out, have them rescind it with that in there.
Well, I think what Matt's saying is we approve it with the request to have this section say that the maintenance will go up based on CPI, but no more than 2% per year.
So the way that Matt had worded it was that we agreed to sign it with the redlined version.
Okay.
But that's what I'm saying, is technically we do, we cannot sign a redlined version. We need to reword how we're doing that. So it needs to be that I need to reach out and see if we can have that adjusted first before we accept this one if they will not.
Well, I think what, what we're doing here is saying, we like that term. If they agree to it, then we're done on our end and it's ready to go. Sign it and be done.
Yeah, that's what I am saying. I'm just saying, just make sure you word it correctly, is what I'm saying. Because we do not have something that we can sign that is redlined and give back.
Sounds like we do need to go back.
That doesn't make.
What do we redline and sign? How do we redline something we cannot alter and send to them?
Redline it, send it back as a PDF. I don't know what.
They'll only accept it through DocuSign.
Well, maybe we oughta find somebody else in.
Go to, back to your caucus, make a motion to table it.
I'll second. A motion been made and second to table the SAP contract for Crystal Reports. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, so it's tabled. All right, ten. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the work authorization number two scope and fee estimate for TNP to provide services to facilitate North Central Texas County of Governments, Category Two Thoroughfare Planning Study. I thought, didn't we approve that in that special deal for the $50,000?
We, we asked them for a new authorization.
Anyway, that's, that's the deal.
Yeah.
So I hear, any discussion? I hear a motion. I have a.
Yeah, Judge.
Work authorization here. It says the $50,000 and outlines the plan. Is there a motion for me to sign this?
Yes.
Okay.
Judge, I will make the motion to approve the work authorization number two scope and fee estimate for TNP to provide services to facilitate North Central Texas Council of Governments, Category Two Thoroughfare Planning Study at $50,000.
I hear second.
Second.
Okay, second. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to approve the work authorization number two, the Thoroughfare Planning Study by TNP, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Good, the motion carries unanimously and I have signed the agreement. All right, this brings us to number 11. Consider and take appropriate action to hire and employ in the district attorney's office above starting pay at clerk one, Roman numer one, $36,600 effective Monday, April the 8th, 2024. Mr. Ryan Sinclair.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We have a vacancy in our office that was created by the retirement of another longtime employee. And I'm trying to replace that vacancy with a new hire. A lady that has interviewed and has accepted the position, comes with a wealth of experience. She has a bachelor's degree, a legal assistant certificate, many years in the legal profession, several years in the office administrative or office profession and office environment. Very well qualified and I'm requesting to hire her at the stated rate on the agenda.
Okay, any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the hire of an employee in the district attorney's office above the starting pay at clerk one, $36,600 effective Monday, April 8th, 2024.
Second. A motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to hire an employee in the district attorney's office above starting pay at clerk, Roman numer one, at $36,600 effective Monday, April 8th, 2024, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. You got your employee.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
Item number 12. Discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Hood County Prayer Task Force usage of the gazebo and north side of the parking lot of the historic courthouse from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM on May 2nd, 2024, contingent upon receipt of use of Hood County facilities requirements and agreement form. Any discussion?
Yes, Judge. Yes, Judge. So the prayer vigil ends on the 1st and then May 2nd is National Day of Prayer, I believe. And actually, they wanted, they really only need it from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. But all we need is the facilities requirement, agreement, and that's it. I mean, I'll make the motion that if there's no other discussion, to allow the Hood County Prayer Task Force usage of the gazebo and the north side of the parking lot of the historical courthouse from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on May 2nd, 2024, contingent upon receipt of the use of the Hood County facilities requirements and agreement form.
Second.
Okay, do you say that the time is from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on May 2nd?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on May 2nd, so to allow the use of the Hood County Prayer Task Force usage of the gazebo at that time. Second by Commissioner Andrews.
Oh, it's actually me.
Thought I heard Andrew's voice, but you second it?
Yes.
Okay, second by Commissioner Samuelson, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay, like I said, we're holding item number five to go into session after we finish with the court. On the consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull or discuss anything on the consent agenda?
Yes, I have questions on line item transfer and the purchase of the night cameras.
Okay, what is, you wanna pull them or discuss it?
Discuss, discuss them. So I asked the, I'm not sure I understand the ARPA change. So Stephanie, Stephanie sent me a response, but it didn't make, could you, Stephanie, could you mind talking about the ARPA 464,241 going from small equipment to capital outlay? I don't see that on our ARPA report. I don't see a small equipment for 464.
Sure. Good morning. How's everybody? Good. Is it afternoon? No. Okay, so the, the shift in the ARPA has to do with some of the equipment that was purchased. So in our initial review and approval of it, we anticipated those items to be less than a capital expense, but some of them in and of themselves were $14,000, the SWAT equipment. So when you see this itemized on your breakdown on the spreadsheet, things that have already been paid for, that were held and approved in the PO status, instead of being put in there as a small equipment, they were actually a capital because each item was worth $14,000. These night vision, or I'm not exactly sure what these items were. So what you're seeing is a shift from small equipment into that capital because it was classified correctly, once we actually got the invoices.
So is it, it's not changed on the.
Right, that's correct.
This one, that you came with the court support. So how will it, when we see the revision, which numbers on here are gonna change?
So you'll see some of these sheriff SWAT equipment shift from that small equipment grouping into the capital grouping.
That's already on purchases completed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a, it was a miscommunication between purchasing and our office as far as categories.
Okay, so some of the sheriff SWAT equipment, which on here, there's $13,000 and $58,000, but that's still a long way from 464,000.
Right, so, and then in the items that are currently not paid for yet.
Okay, under the purchases authorized?
Yes, you'll see the shift.
Sheriff SWAT equipment that's currently at 403,000?
It's a, it's a mixture of those two groupings, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that clarification, and does anybody else?
Yeah, I, I still had a question on the night. We're still on the consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay, on the, there's three proposals for the night security cameras and we had lots of conversations about this over the last couple of days. I think the, one of the questions was, is how, how it was being paid? Because we're, we're moving, as you saw on the line item transfers, there's money being moved from contract services to hardware software and then this is being paid out of hardware software, so that caused me some questions about what, was this budgeted, was it not budgeted? Why are we purchasing something out of software when we're having to move money in there to cover it? So Drew and I had a lot of conversations about that. I think we came down to, there's been some conversations between Glenn and Stephanie and IT about which of those line items in the budget should pay for what.
Yes, ma'am.
So what I've asked Drew to do is to just line out what purchases were paid out of.
Hardware software.
Hardware software that should have been paid out of contract services or in the past and what's being corrected by moving money into hardware software. And then what is budgeted to be paid out of those two line items for the rest of the year? Because when we worked on the budget, there were specific things that you, you provided us with lists of, here are all the things that are in contract services, here are all the things that are in hardware software, and the, this is what's going to be part of this current budget that we're in. So I don't, I didn't understand that we had extra money in there to pay for unbudgeted software. So if we do, I would suggest, this is going into budget season, that we bucket that in the budget to say, this is for unplanned purchases because the budget is for the things we know that are coming up. So he, he's gonna provide that list of what's left to be, to be done or to be paid from budgeted funds. But the only real thing that I still have a question about after, thank you, all the discussion we had yesterday and back and forth, is on the, where there, I guess there's two. Where, where the ones in the NX1, the six or, six or so cameras, where they're gonna be placed? And if the contractor has that, because in the contract it says that we're to provide the drawings, so whether they have that or not. And then on the one that's going in the historical courthouse, it's going, it is going to be attached to the courthouse. So does this as well need to go to the Texas Historical Commission before we can put up a three-quarter inch plyboard and a camera inside the historical courthouse? So those are the two questions that were remaining.
Okay, so first one, you want to know the NX1, where the cameras are going, right?
I wanted to see the map of where they're going to.
We do not have a map.
Okay, well, it's in the contract that.
We have never had maps. We do not provide maps. We do not get maps. We never have with night.
Okay, well, the contract states that they're requiring a map from you of where they're gonna be.
It's a boilerplate template that just gets generated for everybody.
So if we, if they put them in the wrong place, we have no recourse to go back and say, that's not where we wanted them and we'll have to pay for them to be moved.
I have to sign off on approval when the job is done stating that everything is correct. So they would have to come and undo all that and put them in the correct positions before it was completed.
Okay, so how do they know where the correct?
Never had that issue before.
So how do they know where the correct position is?
Because somebody came down and walked with us and marked on a hand-drawn map where they're going.
So they do have a map?
A hand-drawn map in pencil that is not accurate, that they have not provided me, that they have for their own internal stuff, but it is not a official layout.
Okay, so we're, we're not complying with the contract to have a, provide a specific map of where these cameras are to go. So if they are in the wrong place, we are at risk of having to pay for them to be moved because they'll say, you didn't tell us where to put them and we put them where we thought you said. And if everyone's okay with that, I'll just move on.
That's not what he said. He said they walked it and he told them where and they agreed where they're gonna put them. And he's gotta sign off on it before it's approved. That's what he said. So if he doesn't approve it, they're gonna have to move it.
I mean, I've been, and this is the way that it's been done for seven years, never had any issues. Don't think I will.
Okay, I'll move on. Just hope we don't have to pay for them to be moved, okay? And what about the historic courthouse? The asking for, I mean, probably, this is very simple, just like what the judge did on the plaque. It's just sending a letter with, here's where they're gonna go and this is probably a, no issue, but.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can definitely do that. We can definitely let the commission know what's going on. Usually, we don't unless we actually have to do something that requires. actual drilling into the surface of the building, which this will not.
Okay, we just, there's going to be a three-quarter inch plyboard?
Again, that is a template that is in all of those contracts.
Okay.
We can get things that have nothing that get mounted, and we have, and we, on that contract, will say that we need to provide a three, you know, a three-quarter inch plywood to mount, even though there's nothing to mount.
Okay, I'm just reading what's in the contract. So that's what the contract says, is it needs to have a three-quarter inch plyboard to mount the camera.
You know, it would have helped a lot if you and Drew would have gotten together, and y'all, you and Owen would have gotten together and not have to use up everybody's time here in this whole commissioners' court to talk about this.
We did.
They've got to straighten it up.
I had 14 questions.
I got an, we got an email about yesterdayish, the day before or so.
Yeah, we've been discussing.
That continued until about 8:00 last night.
Yes, we've been discussing it.
8:00 last night.
Correct.
Yes, we have been discussing it, and like I said, these were the last two remaining items.
You know, that's kind of unreasonable, Commissioner, to send anything to any county employee at 8:00 in the night, right before a meeting up here, and expect them, what, to work all night, or get up at 5:00 in the morning?
I'm doing my job, Judge. I'm doing my
Are you?
Yes.
I think doing your job would be not tying up every head of all these departments and everybody else up here, and taking out something that this man up here says he's been doing it for seven years with this. This is just insanity to keep on holding everybody here in the county, all of the county employees, the county clerk's office, the road ops, development, human resources.
You're just making it longer right now, so let's get with it.
No, but that happens every time, that's what I'm saying. Why don't you do a little of your homework before you come to commissioners' court?
What do you think I'm doing?
Well, don't do it in commissioners' court, do your homework
I did.
At home.
Did you read the contract? Did you see that it had a three-quarter inch plyboard to be put on the, on the historical courthouse?
No, I'll tell you what I do. I talk to them and get them to answer my questions, just like I did with Don Lenny, when he gives me something about a grinder, or what he says, what we should buy, a demo or a brand-new one. He's an expert in it.
Okay.
I trust his judgment for all his time. That's what I go on. I'm not an expert in doing what they do, but I take care of it prior to coming to commissioners' court so I don't have to use up everybody's time, all these attorneys out here.
I'm doing my job. I'm doing what the people elected me to do, Judge, and I will continue to do that and protect the taxpayers. So from here, the last thing is, you're going to go through the Texas Historical Commission so we don't end up with the debacle that we had a few months ago.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or commission about the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the consent agenda as stated, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that brings us to business to be discussing. Consider for approval, road ops, Mr. Don Lenny.
Judge, Commissioners, we've got three traffic regulatory signs for y'all to
Okay, we got to go into a public hearing then to discuss these, Mr. Andrews. So at 5 minutes to 11:00, we will now convene into a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Judge, all three of these signs that we're asking you to consider is in precinct two. The first one is a yield sign that we'd like to set on Cripple Creek Court at Pearl Orchard Road. We've gotten some calls, concerns. They're doing some oil and gas-related work at the end of Cripple Creek Court, accessing property from that point, and it's kind of got a little traffic up through, up through there. The other two are stop signs in the Comanche Cove Development. This is basically the same type of situation. These roads are dead in a T, a T into another road, and evidently, the traffic has gotten, they've dealt quite a bit of hustles here lately in Comanche Cove. So this one would be a stop sign on Arkansas River at Sabine River Trail, and a stop sign on Devil's River Drive at Sabine River Trail. Road operations recommends placing all three of these regulatory signs in these locations.
Okay. Any comment or questions here in this public hearing about the placement of these signs? If not, then at 4 minutes to 11:00, we convene back into commissioners' court. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the following traffic regulations and take, to establish the yield sign on Cripple Creek Court at Pearl Orchard Road, establish a stop sign at Arkansas River Drive and Sabine River Trail, and also a stop sign at Devil's River Drive at Sabine River Trail.
Second. Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to establish a yield sign on Cripple Creek at Pearl Orchard Road, a stop sign at Arkansas River Drive at Sabine River Trail, a stop sign at Devil's River Drive at Sabine River Trail, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. What else do you have, Mr. Discuss, discuss take appropriate action concerning options available to Hood County in addressing the grinder situation. Yes, sir, Mr. Lenny, you've given all the commissioners the choices.
Yes, sir.
Tell us what you suggest.
The, the, the one thing that, that's not on here, and it was a verbal, we actually talked to Vermeer Friday to see if there's any way that we could switch engines from the Fiat that's in it to a Caterpillar, and no. It's, they said impossible, so. So we have, one option was the rentals, but in the email that you, that you have, it's definitely all three of them are out, and don't know when that will come in. And then we've got a quote for a demo, which, right up front, if we are going to buy a grinder, I do recommend that we do the demo. After 40 hours, it's pretty much set. When we bought this one new, it was about, about 40 hours before we got it, without them having to come out constantly, you know, switching fans, turning this. It's just, it's always that way. So and then the last is the, the new one, and the new one is due to be delivered to Vermeer in May.
So you're saying, let's go with the demo, which already has the kinks worked out?
Yes, sir.
And it's about $15,000 cheaper, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And this is on base, if the commissioners' court do decide to buy one. Of course, then we wait for ours to get repaired, and we did get confirmation again that it would be early August before the part would reach Vermeer.
So it's, the demo is the $525,000? And what about the rentals? I didn't see a pri, I know you said they're out, but I don't see a rental price on here.
No, no, ma'am. I didn't, I didn't receive one from them.
Do I hear a motion? I move that we allow, that we purchase the demo based on Mr. Lenny's past experience with them, and it takes about 40 hours to get the kinks all worked out of a new one. This one should have all the kinks worked out, and it saves the county $15,000. So the price of the demo is how much?
Well, the, the total cost would be not to exceed $535,000.
$535,000, half a million dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, not to exceed $535,000.
Well, and I, you know, my concern, we just revamped the old one to no, no small extent. This is a $5,000 part that we're talking about on that, right?
Yes, it is. Oh, our total, labor and part. Part's about $2,500.
Yeah, man, that's a, this, I don't know. I mean, I hate to, I hate to sit on our hands for another two months waiting on that part to come in, but that's really all we're saving, is two months for 500 grand with a piece of equipment that we just spent pretty significant chunk on, but
Excuse me, when, so when would they, if, if we made this purchase, and I agree with Commissioner Andrews, I mean, we just did all that revamp, but if, when would they get it delivered and set up? What's their ETA on that?
The, the cheaper one, the demo model, is actually being demoed today. And I've got to speak with a couple of you, and if it's not bought, whoever their demo went for, it would be that, that quick.
And they throw it on a flatbed and bring it?
Yeah.
Is that putting us behind on, does this have to do with
The yard, the yard.
Yes, sir, the, the yard.
How long have we gone without being able to use the facility out there?
Last summer was several months.
Yes, it was about four months, yeah.
Four months that we had the yard closed.
Closed. We, we waited until it was at capacity, which it is now. We, we closed it Wednesday after the run.
Do you have any idea what the rental would be if we rented one for two months?
These, these
If one got available?
Uh, these, no. These three that they're showing as rentals are actually a lot larger than ones, than what we have. The last one I looked at was the same as our side, which was 20,000 a month. So I'm guessing
It's hard to rent them, that's a
I'm guessing 25, 24,000 a month
A month?
For this, this size.
So, I don't know. A half a million dollars is
Yes, it is, yes.
A lot to not, you know, just wait for a part. And when did they say the part would be?
They expected delivery 1st of August, first portion of August.
Um, did you, did you make a motion?
I made a motion to go ahead, didn't you, based upon all the options that are available, buying the part, buying a new one, buying the demo, taking everything, what do you suggest, Mr. Lenny? What do, what do you think is the best thing for the county to do?
The, at this, at this time, I would say buy the demo.
Buy the demo.
The only thing, the only difference between now and the first time we went through this is the timing. This is a big part of the year during this time.
How old is the one that's broken, and how many hours are on it? How many hours are on the broken one?
Uh, I didn't, didn't bring that with me.
How old is it?
It's 10, it's a 2, it's 10 years old. It'd be 11 this coming. And as we talked about the first time on the big deal, we've never touched this motor. And actually, this part is not really part of the, it's emission control that does have to be on the machine.
The part that we need right now is emissions control?
Yeah, it's DEF module.
What did you call it?
A DEF module.
Okay.
Well, it runs fine. It just needs like a, something like a catalytic converter?
Uh, sort of, but the computer on it, that's the reason why we couldn't, we had to stop because it, it would run for about two or three minutes and then just, and it would stay, you know, you couldn't start it for another 45 minutes.
So it's like a failsafe?
Yes.
It won't let it go if that part's not working?
Yes. And, well, that's why the machines are going up in price each year. It has to do with this tier one, tier two. I think they're up to tier five now.
So I guess the question is, is do we continue to have a grinder yard, or, that's not what it's called?
Brushyard.
Brushyard, thank you.
Well, I think that that's, that's something you guys use every day. I mean, that's not only a service
Clarence Rodney.
That we provide to the community. That's
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, I don't think we can get away from that.
We can, but it, right now, it's just closed for, other than county.
To be honest, we left just a little bit of room for us, for our cleanup. And based on getting the machine back in August.
Margaret's still here. Can we get grant money for, I mean, that's an option. I just, that's a, half a million dollars is in the middle of the budget year. It's unplanned is
Well, and the problem is, this is not any kind of an investment. This is a, this is a money pit. We're putting money into this thing, and it will eventually break and wear out, and, you know, I kind of like to ride that horse until it can't take another step myself. That's the cheap in me. But, yeah, 500 grand for a, a new one's, it's tough, tough pill.
Well, I made a motion. I don't want to get a second. So anybody else want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table it.
Or
Wait on the part.
I'll second that.
Make a motion to table it? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, a motion made to table this grinder situation by Commissioner Samuelson, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabled in the grinder situation, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Nay. So the ayes have it. So it's tabled. Okay. Is that all you have, Mr. Lenny?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay, thank you. Okay, development, Mr. Gunhead, set a public hearing on the replat of the ranches at Star Hollow. You got a date?
April 23rd, 2024.
April the 23rd, 2024. Okay, item number two, then, discuss and consider allowing the corrected replat of Blue Branch Ranch Lots 82 through 85. Yes, sir?
Court just needs to approve, to allow this corrected plat to be recorded in record. The revised, the replat was approved on January 23rd, commissioners' court. There was a conflict in the lot numbers. Back when it was replat, it was lots 76 through 79. Those lot numbers have been changed to 82 through 85. Nothing has changed in the configurations of the entirety of the plat except for the error in the detail of the numbers.
Okay, so you recommended approval then, right?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the corrected replat of Blue Branch Ranch Lots 82 through 85.
Okay, a motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allow the corrected replat of Blue Branch Ranch Lots 82 through 85.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Do you want to do a motion and a vote on the first one?
Yeah, no, I was, yeah, I was going to say, I make a motion to set the public hearing for the replat of ranches at Star Hollow Lot 1R Block 1 for April 23rd, 2024.
Second. Motion made in second, made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Eagle, to set the public hearing for April the 23rd, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Financial. County Auditor, Ms. Stephanie Matlock.
Hello again. We have invoices in the amount of $1,718,353.82. The auditor's office has reviewed all the invoices for this court and recommends payment.
So I have some questions on the payments over 10,000 that I've emailed you about. One is on the compensation, the ARPA funds, they're in the process of setting up a separate bank account so that those funds don't get commingled with the EMS funds. So can we remove that from this court and put it back on when they have their bank account established?
Yes, that's one of the agreements between them and us.
Okay, so that, this is not going to be paid on this, payments over 10,000, this will come off?
Sure, we can hold that.
Okay. And then the other one had to do with, which is why I asked Dub to, he's back now, so that's good. The final payment to Tyler, this is the final milestone payment, $36,345. It's the final milestone payment, which we, if we have issues, of course, you're always going to have issues with software, but what I wanted to ask, because I've seen emails going back and forth between the clerk's office and JP4, and Ashley and their team are doing a great job of trying to handle the ones that they can handle, but as Dub mentioned earlier, there are some that are Tyler's issues. So I, this is like the acceptance of the final product, and if the pro, if the product is hampering our employees from being able to comply with any statutory requirements, or it's impacting the public, then I think those are things that are, that Tyler needs to take care of before we say, yep, we're good, here's your final payment. So I'm asked, I don't know, if Dean, if you want to come up and address the problems that you're having, and
and, and if they fall into that category. If it's just, hey, I wish this button was green instead of red, or I wish this field was here, those are different. Those are just ongoing issues. But if it's something that's keeping you from fulfilling your statutory obligations, then that's something Tyler needs to fix before we say, yeah, we're good, here's your final payment.
Commissioners, Judge, just like Justice Gillum, our monthly reports are not coming up correct as well. Our daily reports come up correct, they show the monies that we take in. We run that same report for the month, but just like the judge said, it's the distribution report that we give the treasurer. So every cost that we take in, you know, there's a statute telling us to, to accept it. And then there's a, a line item, or not a line item, a GL account number attached to each fee code. And so at the end of the month, we give that, the whole month's report, to the treasurer, and it has all those fee codes with those GL accounts. And that's how she sends information to, or the monies to the state, or to the Fund Fifty-Five, and numerous different accounts. And our monthly report balances correctly, but the distribution report does not. It's because it, there are certain items that we collect on that it just doesn't show up on the report. We know what they are, we tell them what they are, they're miscellaneous payments. Those are payments made where there's no case involved, so we have to make them miscellaneous, so if somebody comes and makes a copy, or does a search, or wants a records check, or something like that. So those are not showing up on the distribution report. IT's been good in, in helping us. And there's another issue that's with our bill of cost. Our bill of cost, since day one, has had Tona's name on it, with Tona's court, Tona's office, and such like that. And those are, are really, it sounds like trivial matters, but they're pretty important. And I'm gonna just give you these, if you don't find them, get us to down. These, this is a copy of a report, and this is why it's so important. And if you read it, you'll understand. Go, sir. I'm sorry. And apologize to the people who get involved on those. And so it's, it's important these things to be corrected. And if you have any questions of me, I'll be glad to answer them, otherwise, I'll sit down.
So what is the, this is a ticket into Tyler, and they are working on it, or?
I put the ticket into, into Ty, Tyler. I think, I've got copies over there, but it was February first. We've also, in, in some, in mid-February, I have emails showing that IT, I texted IT, Drew, and, and Ashley, but it's just not something that they can fix, this is a Tyler, Tyler fix. Both, both issues that I have are, have gone through IT. Ashley's tried to fix them, and she said that she couldn't, and she forwarded them to, to somebody high in Tyler, and they're supposed to be getting on it, but, but it's been forty days, and they haven't done anything.
So this falls in the category of you not being able to fulfill your statutory requirements?
That, that is-
And it's also impacting the public?
That is correct. You know, we, we hear that citizens ask why the, the county clerk is not on these auditors' reports in the past, and this is the exact same thing. This is the same issue that we've had from, from the, from the get-go. The only time, the monthly reports, we don't have a problem, is if we've not taken any miscellaneous payment.
So with that, I'll recommend that we pay the bills, except for the, the payment to Pecan Plantation Fire Department and the Tyler Technologies payment.
Second. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Samuelson to pay the bills, as stated, with the exception of the Tyler bill and the Pecan Plantation bill, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Nay. So it's approved four to one. Okay, the next item is acknowledge and accept the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four review of the Sheriff's Commissary，在 inmate and bail bond divisions financial records. Sheriff, is that yours? Or is that yours?
I thought it was the auditor's, is it not?
The, the review of the Sheriff's Commissary，在 inmate and bail bond financial records. Is that yours?
It's, I guess, both of ours.
Okay.
So we met and did a surprise cash audit of the jail, excuse me, the Commissary，在 inmate and bail bond, bail bond divisions, and the findings are there with you. We've talked about this with all the departments, and we all agree to what you see there stated.
Okay, is that it? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that we accept the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four review of the Sheriff's Commissary，在 inmate and bail bond division financial records.
Say. Yeah, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to accept the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Sheriff's Commissary，在 inmate and bail bond divisions financial records, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Now, at this time, at eleven eighteen, the commissioners' court will convene into executive, executive session to discuss item number five. Okay, at seven minutes after seven, we are convening back into commissioners' court, and- Seven minutes after twelve, we're convening back into commissioners' court and make the announcement that no action was taken in executive session. Okay. This meeting is adjourned.